Point of order.
Roll call?
Oh, we are, I'm sorry. Can we have roll call things?
Counselor Cornwell?
Present.
Counselor Bravo?
Present.
Counselor Shaw?
Here.
Senator Shaw?
Counselor Lonergan? Oh, sorry. I don't know what's going on there. Counselor Wilk?
Lieutenant Wilk?
Counselor Kentu?
Here.
Mayor Lonergan?
Here.
Counselor, sorry. My apologies. Counselor Gohava?
Counselor Gohava.
Ella no pudo venir el día de hoy.
So, I understand that we are having interpretations.
Entiendo que el día de hoy estamos teniendo interpretación para esta noche. Vamos a proveer radios para todos los que hablen solo un lenguaje. Va a ser interpretado en inglés y en español. Algunos de ellos vamos a ver. Tenemos a dos interpretes que están acá presentes también.
Probably have a pause before you go into public comment.
We sent them, they must get to say one a pause.
So. With that, let's move on to announcements, please. Counselor Kentu.
Okay. Forgive me, I'm gonna try to put these in somewhat of a chronological order. I have three sheets to put together. Um, first, November is Diabetes Awareness Month. Um, a time to raise awareness, share resources, and encourage healthy living to prevent and manage diabetes. Together, we can take steps towards a healthier future and support those living with diabetes. I am one of those people. I have type one diabetes, so. Um. The Fall Leaf Drop site is open through December 19th. So if you have fall leaves, only leaves, no tree limbs, no contractor or landscape company dumping. And that is located 1084 Country Club Road here in Woodburn. Um. City Hall and the library will be closed tomorrow, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Transit Service will run 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Uh, Thursday, the 13th, this Thursday is the last day to sign up for Love Santa here at the library. Uh, this Friday is the second Friday on First in Front from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Bungalow Theater. And, uh, for Thanksgiving holiday, the city hall and the library will be closed Thursday, the 27th and Friday, the 28th. Transit services will, um, be closed on Thursday, the 27th, but will run on Friday, the 28th. Uh, the city council meeting that is scheduled for November 24th has been canceled. The next city council meeting after tonight will take place on December 8th. Uh, December 6th is the mayor's tree lighting. That's a Friday, I believe, from 4:00 to 6:30, and this is in the downtown plaza. They will have Santa's workshop and photos, uh, between 4:00 and 5:30 at the public library. Uh, the tree lighting will be at the plaza starting at 5:30. And, um, there will also be a sensory Santa. So if you have a kiddo that would benefit from a smaller crowd, um, you can enjoy Santa from 3:00 to 4:00 there as well. Um, you do have to register for that, so you'd have to call 503-982-5386 to register your family for that. And then, um, there is a Woodburn Holiday Art Camp Contest. The city of Woodburn invites all Woodburn students, kinder through 12, to show off their creativity by designing a holiday postcard. All art submissions will be on display at the Bungalow Theater for the months of December and January. The winning design will be featured in the Wood, City of Woodburn Holiday Postcard, and the artists will have the honor to help light up the Woodburn Holiday Tree at the annual tree lighting. And, um, finally, the sparkle of the holidays will light up, and so will the holiday decorating contest. So, um, on the November 21st, look for more details, and that's a city contest to light up our homes. And then, last, um, I believe it's Salem Health is putting on some, um, education workshops. Um, Community Education Programs Diabetes Self-Management Series, Wednesday, November 12th, Wednesday, November 19th, and Wednesday, the 26th, all at the public library from 6:00 to 8:30. And you can register at SalemHealth.org. And then they're also putting on a vaping workshop, facts, tips, and resources, and that will be on December 3rd from 6:00 to 7:00. Um, and free childcare and dinner will be offered for that one. I think that's it. Those are our announcements. Oh, do we have another one?
Can you make a correction on the Christmas tree lighting, a confirmation? It's usually a Sunday night and sticks to the Saturday night. Can Jesse or?
It'll be Saturday.
Saturday. I, I apologize. December 6th.
Yes.
Is a Saturday.
And that's between Library Park and, uh, the plaza. Um, thank you. Any questions about announcements? I'd like to make a point, uh, with tomorrow being Veterans Day. I want to put a, give a personal shout out and thank you to all of our city employees, uh, men and women that have served in the, uh, in the service. Thank them for their service. Being a veteran myself, and I have a son that's got 20 years in the Army. I'm very proud of him and all of those that have served. I thank you all, uh, those that are here, those that are not here. But, uh, it's a special day, um, and I appreciate the, the service. Moving on. I have a proclamation. November being Small Business Month, and many years ago, I operated a small business, so I will take the honor of reading this myself. Uh, not, not, noticing November 2025 is Small Business Month. Whereas, the city of Woodburn, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently over 33 million small businesses in the United States, accounting for over 99% of all U.S. businesses. And whereas, 45.9% of American workers are employed by a small business. And whereas, the average salary of a small business owner is 16% above the annual mean wage in the United States. And whereas, over a quarter of all firms are family-owned businesses. And whereas, Woodburn, Oregon is home to over 1,900 small businesses, representing 98% of all licensed businesses in the city, who create jobs, boost our local economy, and strengthen the fabric of our community. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday After Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Frank Lonergan, Mayor of Woodburn, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2025 as Small Business Month, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the county, country, to support small businesses and merchants during the month of November, and on Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2025, and throughout the year. So, our next order of business is some presentations. Um, and I'm, I know that we have a special one going later on with Republic Services, and I'm gonna ask Republic that, I'm gonna move you down a little bit. We're gonna do, take, uh, Business from the Public first. But I'm gonna go ahead, and I think it's good to, uh, recognize some of these others first. It is an indeed, an honor to me to be able to recognize people here in Woodburn. I've lived in Woodburn over 60 years, been involved in, in many different organizations. And I'm very fortunate and proud to be working with the people that I work with here in Woodburn today. And we're gonna recognize a few of those, not all of them, but a few of them, and well justified. The first one is a, uh, recognition to a Public Arts and Mural Committee member that left. She came on and, uh, and left and then came back. Christy Saint Amant, um, has left that, but I do want to thank her for being part of it. The city acknowledges and honors your support and dedication to the Public Arts and Murals Committee, and your unwavering commitment to service to Woodburn and its residents. And I do not believe Christy is here, and I, but I know that our council president will get that to her.
I will.
And so then, we have another member of our Public Arts and Mural Committee. We have a member who started out with this when the Public Arts and Mural Committee started many years ago, in 2012. And our council president, Sharon Shaw, has seen the, uh, the, the great progress that the Arts and Mural Committee has done over the years. And for the last probably five or six years, has been the Arts and Mural Chair, and done a very good job on that. And so I'd like to recognize and thank Sharon for her work on the Arts and Mural Committee. The first project was, uh, the murals, the cune. Then we went into the, uh, the, the grass statues over by the, the plaza. And then many murals you've been involved in since then. But I'm excited because I think one of your biggest projects is coming to fruition in the next few weeks. And that is our bison, uh, family that is gonna be stationed up near the high school. And not an easy venture that Sharon has, has led the committee through. It's, it's one of our more expensive projects, uh, working on property that is not owned by the city, uh, and bringing a committee together to agree on that. You've done an awesome job. So, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Um, first, I want to thank, um, Mayor Frank Lonergan for his vision of the Arts and Mural Program. It's incredible. Jamie Johnk, uh, for her leadership during the 11 years that I have served on the committee. Um, the members, um, let's see, Colleen, um, Vansel, Mary Beth, um, Cornwell, Judy Messiah, Christine Lopez, Brenda Valentino Bravo, Mary Berlin, and Kath, and Catherine Johnson, all contribute to the success of, um, creating beautiful art for Woodburn. Sharon Corning and, um, um, the mayor just said, Christy Saint Amant, as past members, are also credited for their service. Our outstanding staff, city attorney, um, Mackenzie Graham, um, Assistant City Attorney, um, Chris Kilmer, Curtis Schultz, Chris Kerr, um, Kayla Maxwell, Heidi Hinshaw, Jim Rowe, um, Jamie, um, Zambian, and Scott Derrickson. Um, all of our projects would not be possible without the expertise and the guidance from this incredible team. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Counselor Mayor, can I, can I ask you and Council President Shaw to maybe stand quickly for a picture, uh, for our last voice?
Yes. So Sharon is leaving that committee. She is still very involved in other aspects of the city. And, uh, we're fortunate to have her staying on the city council. Uh, but we're also very lucky for the work she has done on that committee. And, uh, the committee's not through. Like I say, this is, this is a huge project that we're coming up with, but there will be many more to, uh, brighten our city up, so. Thank you again so much for all you've done.
Absolutely.
So moving on. I am, again, deeply honored to recognize somebody that has done so much for the city. Um, Sharon mentioned Jamie Johnk, and Jamie. It's one word, impact. This is called the 2025 Impact Award, and that's what Jamie has done for the many years she has worked for the, the city of Woodburn. She's devoted over 25 years to the field of economic development with a career that spans local, regional, and state-level impact across Oregon. She began her journey with the Canby Business Revitalization Program, followed by roles at Business Oregon, and served as an economic development leader for the cities of Silverton and Malala. She later joined Clackamas County, where she served as Economic Development Coordinator for nearly a decade, overseeing major initiatives in infrastructure, business retention, and Main Street revitalization. Since joining the city of Woodburn in 2015, Jamie has built the city's economic development program from the ground up, transforming it into one of the most successful in Oregon. Her career reflects a deep commitment to inclusive growth, regional collaboration, and long-term impact. She has consistently demonstrated leadership, innovation, and a passion for uplifting communities through economic opportunity. This is recognized by the Oregon Economic Development Association. And like I say, the word impact says it all for, for Jamie. She has taken over when she came to work for the city of Woodburn. I know she didn't realize that Urban Renewal was gonna be part of her, uh, her, her job duties. And from Urban Renewal, she branched out to the Arts and Mural Committee, and has taken up a lot of her time. She has a great team. And she's done a fantastic job leading them. But then there's so many other, other things, you know, what she's done, First Street renovation, Front Street renovation, uh, Amazon, helping bring Amazon to Woodburn. So Jamie, please come up. I'd like to recognize you for so much you have done for our city.
Yes, you haven't said a word. Jamie is not leaving us. We're just recognizing one small aspect of, uh, what she said first this week.
All right, smile, you do. All right. There you go. Thank you.
Welcome being to your home, your businesses, and being a part of that's what I'm working here with. The joy, the blessing, and really an opportunity for me to, to grow and it's no one you have. And these guys are pretty. I have to, you're real honored to be part of this, so. Thank you everyone for coming and grabbing.
Thank you, Jamie.
So one of Jamie's projects, we're gonna talk about now. Jamie came up with the American Dream Video Series and listed Woodburn as a, uh, talking point, and has put this together, and I'm gonna read this, uh, briefly. And then I'm, we're gonna have Jamie show a, uh, this video series that, uh, again, was recognized by the Oregon Economic Development as an award of excellence in economic development with exceptional marketing and promotions. Pardon?
Sure.
Sure, I'm gonna give it to you. Woodburn is located in North Marion County, boarded by I-5 and Highway 99. Woodburn has always been an ethically diverse community, where we have thrived on agricultural and rural living. Even today, as our city experiences remark, remarked growth with new industries and commercial businesses, and housing being constructed for our growing workforce and residents, Woodburn still retains its rural quality of life. People can still come to Woodburn and open a business and become part of a community that embodies the American dream. Through this series of videos, we're sharing what we, what the American dream means to Woodburn businesses and to our community. Woodburn has an incredible business community, from large traded-sector companies to small mom-and-pop shops. Each one reflects and embraces the rich culture and diversity of our city. The American Dream Series shines a light on a side of Woodburn that many people may not otherwise have the chance to see. This first series was created to be shared widely, so everyone can experience and celebrate the stories, resilience, and dreams that make Woodburn's businesses, communities so special. So Jamie was proud to nominate the Woodburn American Dream Series with the Exceptional Marketing and Promotions Award to recognize and applaud our businesses for achieving success and pursuing their own American dream. So it's, again, quite an honor to be recognized with, uh, with this award. And Jamie, I'll give this back to you, and we will show our video.
It's all fairness.
Yeah.
Years ago, I heard stories from our city administrator about how Woodburn was really a part of the American dream. So that got us kinda noodle in the thoughts and came up with the concept of the American Dream Video Series to where we can introduce people in Woodburn and outside of Woodburn um, to our business community and our Woodburn community from a different perspective. We can go into El Mercadito, and we can buy something, or we can leave, but never get to really know their story behind how the business came to be. And we wanted to be able to share that with other people so we can share the American dream here. So we've put together this great video series. This is a shortcut of it. And then we have a longer version, and then each individual business that participated in this first series will have a, about a 10 to 15-minute series that they can, will have on videos throughout Woodburn. And Carmen can show it on her website and so on and so forth. And we'll continue telling these stories, because it's an amazing story to tell.
Thank you.
Boss?
Thanks.
Have anything to say?
Only that the video series is intended to highlight the best ideals of what this country and what Woodburn aspires to be. We want to reflect the values that we want our community held to, and we want to reflect what we think is unique and special about Woodburn. And I think that message is more important now than ever.
I, I believe so as well.
Please take pictures, because, well, you told me to take pictures.
I have passed the rest of my team here, so I'm.
It's amazing how good the council is at fun here.
She doesn't trust.
Do, do, smile, Jamie.
Thank you. Smile on my head.
Yes. So Jamie, thank you again for putting that together. I know this was a shorter version of the, uh, the video. But it really shows, uh, that Woodburn has a heart, that people have made an effort to, uh, do well here, to, uh, uh, make a living here, and, and it works. Thank you.
Great video.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments, before we move on?
Could they find a longer version?
Send the city's webpage?
Thank you.
Okay, next, we are going to go to Business from the Public. This allows the public to introduce items for council consideration that's not already scheduled on the agenda. Come at time, normally we limit to three minutes. We'll see how, how that goes. Um. I do have, I don't know how many, 10, 15, uh, speaker cards. Um, and I will go in order of what, what I have here. What I, I would request is that we don't get a whole lot of people repeating what somebody else has said.
Okay.
Feel free to come up and, and speak, give your name, say you agree with what has already been said. But, uh, for, for time's sake, we have a, a lot of other business to discuss tonight. Uh, I, I would appreciate it if we can kind of limit it to, uh, um, as short as possible, but I will give everybody an opportunity to speak. Um, what do we need to do with the radios here?
I turned mine on, and it just seems to be working, so, um.
So does everybody have one?
Yep.
And.
I'm gonna say I've been listening, and the interpreters are doing an incredible job. You're welcome. An amazing skill.
Okay. Is the council ready to proceed? The first speaker I have is Carmen, listen to Ward 1. Carmen? Please, come on up. Hi.
My name is Carmen Cruz. Uh, I represent El Mercadito, and I'm gonna go a record, that is, that is, we're passing through a very difficult migration. No one, no one, nothing, we're not adjusting for, we're not selling for the costs. No one, and we want the city to support us in something. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. I'm sorry.
The, the microphone is on. You have to sit kinda close to the mic.
Yeah.
And, uh, you, you really do have to get close, so.
Next up, I have Joy from Ward 6.
Hello, everybody. My name is Joanna. I have, I've been a resident for Woodburn for more than eight years. I have been working with the community over, directly over five years. I'm here to demand the city of Woodburn to speak up and be the voice for our community. I demand the city of Woodburn members and defend our community who don't have a voice right now. The city of Woodburn celebrates cultures and brags about diversity that they have here in Woodburn. But yet, I don't see you guys standing up for our community. I am the voice for our community. I'm the voice for Kisel, Maricela. community. I'm the voice for Quiselle, Maricela, Don Chivista, Horacio, my community members that I see, my people in Woodburn. And this is what they had to say to all of you. We are scared. We are not criminals. We are people, hardworking people, that provide the city with culture, food, and don't forget, each year we pay our taxes. We are family. Why aren't you guys speaking up for us? Why are you letting these criminals kidnapping and separating families? City of Woodburn is our home, is our city. We are the community. You celebrate each year. Be our voice and stand up. Get ICE out of here.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jazz.
Hello. Hi, I am an immigrant myself. And when I arrived to this community, to this state, to this country, my favorite fact about me was telling people that I was indeed an immigrant born in an indigenous town in Chocan, Mexico. But now it saddens me that people don't have that ability anymore, that they are living in fear. It's a fear that I never got to feel, but other kids my age or other people are feeling this fear. I did not came to try to convince you to see who deserves to be here, who doesn't deserve to be here, because like one of my favorite professors once said, we can show people all statistics or evidence, but once they have made the dots, there's nothing to do. There's only that's losing time. What we have to do right now is take action. So I came to ask you, what are you going to do for all the ICE raids that are going on right now? What are we going to do to protect our children, to protect our youth? Because obviously they are fearing and fear and they are surviving. I came to remind you that you are here for the people, not the people for you, that it is your duty, if you have principles and values, to protect every single member of this community. So I tell us what to do. We are also here to help you to protect this community as we form part of it. I want to keep telling people in every single spot space that I am either on my job, either at national conventions for engineering, that I am an immigrant and that I am from Mexico and that I don't have to live in fear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I should clarify that it is not in the council's method of operation here that we're going to get into a discussion over any response to what's what's said. At the end, I might cover a few comments, but we're not going to go back and forth in a discussion here for sake. This is not the place to do that. Next up, I have Mar, Mar Sen, Ward five. M A R, Marlet, lady.
Hello, everybody. I'm a student at Woodburn High School, and I am here today to demand that we get rid of the folk security cameras around Woodburn. I am also here to demand that our city police does not collaborate with ICE. Our community has been experiencing attacks during the past few weeks. What is our city council doing to stop this? Where is the action? Our community is doing all the work and contributing to end this, but I still don't see our council doing this. Why? I demand a sanctuary resolution for our own, ensuring a safe and welcoming city. We need resources for a community who have been affected by ICE raids. I volunteer at the St. Luke's Food Bank. It's packed. Every time I see many families come and some don't even get anything. Why? Because there aren't enough resources. We need more food banks. We need more resources for fellow immigrant community. I demand action now.
Thank you. Lydia Contreras. Lydia?
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good afternoon. My name is Lydia Contreras. I'm a second grade teacher at Washington Elementary, with me my three-year-old daughter. Today I stand here not only for myself, for my family, my colleagues, but most importantly, for my students. I'm here in hopes of raising awareness on some of the struggles I'm facing in the classroom, the emotional sadness I'm seeing my students struggle with. Ever since, ever since our community was attacked on the morning of October 30th, 2025, when over 30 people were taken by ICE, I find myself morning after morning wondering if it'll be another morning where it feels we're at war zone. The first thing I found myself doing ever, ever since after waking up is checking my social media to send to see any updates on ICE activity, to see what kind of day I'll be having. And this is not okay because it's not healthy at all for me. As a daughter of immigrants, as a teacher, as a mother, I'm hurting. This is preventing me from performing my job duties to the best of my abilities. When 16-year-old Manny from Hillsborough said last week, I'm scared for my parents to walk out of there, to walk out of their house because I might not be able to say goodbye to them if they go to work. I might not ever be able to say bye or see them again if you guys don't side with us. And I'm scared of it because they fought so hard to come here and chose a life for their kids. I can assure you, he spoke for many of us. He spoke for an eight-year-old in my classroom. He spoke for me. And I'm 31 years old. I'm a full grown woman. Yet I share the same fear these kids have. With every conversation, I worry if this is the last time I'll be speaking to my parents in person. Earlier this spring, I told the school board members that in my class, I've had students tell me things like, ¿Sabías que la amiga ya puede entrar a las escuelas? And, maestra, ¿Qué pasa si nos deportan a todos? Please remember that these are eight-year-olds. And my classroom is just one of many facing this concern. Please help me understand how I can stand in front of my students each day without calling them out for being distracted when I know their minds are elsewhere. How will you help me and other educators make our state, our students and families feel safe? Help me bring less fear into our school and more positives by providing the community with work sessions to further discuss potential strategies with the community input. As a parent, I'm also struggling. Even though I was born and raised in the United States, I also share some of the fear of the parents in my classroom because I fit the description. I fit the description these agents are looking for. I get nervous taking my child to the park. Today, more than ever, I feel like I need to be aware of my surroundings, not just for me and my child, but for the families that we need at the park. I start overthinking the what-ifs. What if a pack of SUVs were to enter the parking lot? What if a group of men were to come towards us right now? What would I say? How do I help my daughter and the other kids not to witness such traumatic events? This is not okay. I should be able to feel safe at the park and enjoy my bonding time with my three-year-old daughter. So please do something about this and please remember that we are Woodburn. Thank you.
Thank you, Lydia. Appreciate you coming. Nia, Ward six.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nia. I'm a proud member of a beautiful community made of immigrants here in Woodburn. I'm here today to demand that the city of Woodburn take all necessary action to protect all community members, especially those being traumatized, terrorized, and persecuted by ICE. In these last few weeks, 42 families have suffered a kidnapping, have suffered a kidnapping of a loved one, and they have been left traumatized and devastated. By any means, this is not acceptable and cannot be tolerated. How can we allow this? As a local government, you have the duty of protecting all members of Woodburn. We pride ourselves of celebrating our culture such as the Fiesta Mexicana, which brings in revenue and attraction. Woodburn is not the same without the culture of our community that is being terrorized nationwide. We cannot be complicit to allow this. I demand that the city of Woodburn institute a state of emergency. This includes creating a local resolution, ensuring that Woodburn is a safe and welcoming space, upholding the sanctuary promise law of Oregon, and creating our own local sanctuary policy, allocating funding resources for community impacted by federal cuts and ICE detention. This includes housing, food assistance, emergency shelter, and living assistance, providing funding for local organizations that are directly supporting families, individuals affected by ICE, organizations such as Centro de Servicios para Campesinos, food banks, and Mano a Mano to help our organizations. In addition, we need immediate accountability of the Woodburn Police Department to ensure that there is no violation of Oregon's sanctuary promise. We as a community are not sure if police are working with ICE to tear a community apart. They do charity events for kids of color who are from the immigrant background to build a so-called community, but now we demand that they are accountable and demonstrate us that they are not working with ICE at all, the same ones tearing apart those kids' families that the police department pride on serving. I demand that there is independent audit that will report back how the Woodburn Police Department works with ICE and federal agencies. A written public commitment by the police department that they will not write into the 287G program regardless of the sanctuary status law, training and written protocols for local law enforcement that requires ICE agents to identify themselves to police. Moreover, Flock security cameras that are present in Woodburn contribute to the terrorizing of our community. We demand the end of the Flock program in the city of Woodburn. The Flock Security is a multi-billion dollar company that has proved to be dishonest and harmful. They've lied about saying that the U.S. Border Patrol didn't have access to cameras, but in reality, they had access to more than 82,000 cameras nationwide. These tools carry a great risk to our community and pose a threat to all of our privacy. We demand independent audit to entail a number of requests made by federal agencies such as the FBI, ICE, DEA, and provide details what the contract is about the Flock program in Woodburn. I hope you listen to all our demands and ensure that we feel safe and protected in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Next, I have Ira Cola Martinez, Ward two.
Good evening. My name is Ira Cola Martinez, and I am here on behalf of Pecun, Oregon's farmworker union. I come before you because our community is in crisis. In the last few weeks alone, several dozens of our community members have been detained in ICE raids. Many of them are farmworkers and low-wage Latina families who contribute every day to Woodburn's economy and vitality. One raid alone, as you've heard, took over 35 workers in a single morning. These are parents, breadwinners, and neighbors whose absence leaves families in turmoil and children without stability. These actions have caused deep fear and uncertainty across our neighborhoods. People are afraid to go to work, to drive their kids to school, or to even open their doors. The emotional and economic toll is immense. As a city built on labor and resilience of immigrant working families, Woodburn must do more to protect its people. That is why Pecun is urging the city of Woodburn to declare a local state of emergency and taking media action and steps to safeguard residents from further harm. This means passing a Safe and Welcoming City Resolution that reinforces Oregon Sanctuary Promise Law and commits to developing local policies that protect all residents regardless of immigration status. This means allocating emergency funding for families affected by detention to support them with food, housing, and basic necessities, partnering with organizations such as Centro de Servicios para Campesinos, the Woodburn Food Bank, Mano a Mano, who is working directly with communities and who are impacted by these detentions. We also call for greater accountability and transparency from local law enforcement. Many residents have voiced concerns about how the Woodburn Police Department interacts with federal agencies, and for that reason, we are urging for an independent audit that examines any communication or cooperation with ICE or other federal entities, a public commitment that Woodburn Police will not participate in the 287G program, and clear protocols requiring ICE agents to identify themselves in any interactions with local police. Lastly, as was mentioned earlier, we must address the use of the Flock camera surveillance system. While these cameras are often promoted as tools for public safety, they pose serious risks for immigrant and working-class communities. The data they collect can be accessed by outside agencies, creating fear and distrust among residents who already live and under constant surveillance. We urge the city to end the use of the Flock cameras immediately and conduct an independent audit to determine how the data is used, who has access to it, and what agreements exist with federal or private entities. Woodburn's identity has always been rooted in its working families, farmworkers, construction workers, service workers, and others who keep our communities thriving. They deserve to feel safe in their homes, at schools, and on their way to work. We ask the city council to stand with your residents, to lead with courage, and to act decisively to ensure that Woodburn truly remains a place for safety, dignity, and belonging for everyone.
Thank you. I have Kathleen. Salem?
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Kathleen Treppa, and I live in the city of Salem. And I am here today to stand with the other people in this audience to urge the city of Woodburn to take action to protect its residents, all of them, against illegal ICE activity. I am a retired local government professional, and I am the proud daughter of an immigrant. My father was born during the Spanish Civil War. He was raised under a fascist dictatorship, and he came to this country as an adult, and he lived the American dream. And I am so sad and heartbroken to sit here and share with you that I'm glad he's not here today, to see that his American dream has been killed and is dead for millions of people who live in this country. It is horrific. And I'm here because there are times when individually and collectively, we need to take a stand against abusive authority and flagrant and illegal violations of the U.S. Constitution and state and federal laws. And that time is now. We can't look away. We can't ignore. We can't condone these ICE raids that disregard all people's constitutionally protected civil rights regardless of citizenship status. Forty-two people in the last few weeks have been abducted from this city, from this community without due process, and subject to conditions while in detention that would never have been acceptable under any other federal administration regardless of party affiliation. That terror has to stop now. I urge the city council to stand up for its residents and adopt a resolution declaring Woodburn, Woodburn a sanctuary city, a resolution that not only adheres to the state of Oregon's sanctuary promise laws, but one that also establishes local sanctuary protections, one that reaffirms the city's commitment that the police department will not assist or share any information with federal immigration enforcement agencies, either as a department, or more importantly, any individual officers, including information obtained through the Flock surveillance camera system. The police department should respond to 911 calls during ICE enforcement actions to verify the identity of these masked thugs. We don't know who they are. They're masked. They don't show identification, and there are documented cases across this country where people are imposing legitimate law enforcement officers, and they're abducting people. What's happening to those folks? The police should also ensure that excessive force isn't being needlessly used against detainees or bystanders. Federal officers do not have the right to assault people, to kneel on people's necks, or to pepper spray people in the face for documenting their actions. I urge you to work with the local community-based organizations that are standing every day to assist those in need. The same community members who are here, they are your tradespeople, your farmworkers, your public servants. They are the backbone of this community, and they are the backbone of every community across this country. Please work with them to develop and adopt a resolution affirming Woodburn's commitment to being an inclusive community, one that celebrates its diversity, recognizes the contributions that immigrants make across this country every day. We are in historic times for our democracy, and we must stand together for everyone, not just the privileged. We are in historic times for our democracy, and we must stand together for everyone, not just the privileged few. Thank you.
Thank you. Police, Ross? Sorry if I get anyone's name wrong.
Okay. I live in Salem, and I have this Latino population in Salem, and Woodburn are very interconnected and supportive of one another. That's why I'm here. I'll be making these same kind of statements to the Salem City Council in a couple of weeks. I didn't know that the population of Woodburn, sixty percent, were Latino. I didn't know that. Sixty percent of your population are targets? How many people? These people are traumatized? How many? Sixty percent of your population is traumatized? I scoped out a restaurant in my community last week. The employees put a close sign on the door, and they were scared to leave the building. They locked the door. I drove around looking for ICE vehicles, and I spotted a cop about half a block away, parked in a parking lot. And I pulled up, and I told him what was going on. And he said, "Well, I can't do anything. I can't interfere with federal officers." And I said, "Well, can you at least park your car in the parking lot to maybe deter ICE from coming? Maybe at least show the employees you care?" And he said, "No, because if I do that, and something goes down, then they're gonna want me to do something about it." You're right. We expect the police to do something about it. California, Portland, Colorado, and Chicago, judges, lawyers, and others are increasingly calling for investigations into charges of excessive force and holding ICE accountable for violating civil rights. We have the best Attorney General in the country in Dan Rayfield. We need to ask him to help us stand up for the Latino community and get a TRO or some sort of law passed with teeth in it to start holding these guys accountable. You heard tonight, forty-two people from your community got kidnapped. Twenty-three people in detention centers across the country have died. We know the conditions in those detention centers are deplorable. Twelve hundred people from the Florida Detention Center are gone. They're gone. I see videos every day of people getting tear gas point-blank, rubber bullets, women grabbed by the hair, dragged to the ground, men broken bones. ICE leaves trauma and violence in its wake, and often the local police are complicit. On November 5th, Mayor, you made a statement, it was a lovely statement, and included in that statement is, "The Woodburn Police Department continues to serve and protect every member of our community with professionalism and care." It's bullshit. And as a white person, I'm calling my white privilege, I'm standing up, and I'm saying, as a white person, telling other white people, "What the hell was that video? The American Dream? Half the people in that video were Latino." This isn't their American Dream. People are getting kidnapped. And you're saying that the police department is protecting every member of our community with professionalism and care? I am begging you to look outside the box. We cannot allow this crap to continue. They are violating civil rights every day. And what are you gonna do about it? I'm tired of hearing what you can't do. I wanna know what you can do.
Thank you, your ladies, for sharing. Next up, I have Leslie Medina.
All right, so first, I want to start off by saying that I agree with her. When I watched that video, I was disgusted. How dare you put her on the screen when she's pleading that she is not getting customers? Her people are not shopping. They're not going to the doctors. They are not picking up their medications, okay? They are not contributing to this economy. We are scared. This is a political quarantine that is undergoing in Woodburn. Okay? People are not leaving. Hello, my name is Leslie, and I am speaking on the behalf of the most vulnerable and the most curious. With the influx of ICE agents in Woodburn, our community has inevitably become more vigilant and observant about unmarked vehicles. Okay? Specifically, vehicles with no plates, fake plates, no tags, expired tags. I think it is clear to all of us that this is a purposeful tactic that ICE is utilizing to conceal their identity and make it difficult for the city to get involved. How are we, city members, able to properly identify ICE agent vehicles and productively report them due to this harsh concealment tactic? Tell me, please. Speaking personally, I am someone who has always respected and upheld transportation laws. It is unfair and ironic that these so-called federal agents are belittling the very important requirement. I call on this council to hold the federal government to the same standard that you guys are applying on the rest of these city members. Although small in relation to the bigger picture, I believe that any level of accountability will progress into community safety. I urge that the city of Woodburn and the Woodburn Police Department specifically to make a statement on ICE agent vehicle concealment and to make a serious action on this issue by working with higher officials to implement safe identification laws. Because if the elected officials in California can enact the No Secret Police Act, then we can also move forward with a systematically implementation to create change, okay? That's everything.
Thank you, Leslie. Next, I have Juan, Word three. It'd be Ivan. How about Michaela, Word three?
Hello, I'm a lifelong Woodburn resident, community member, and I was born and raised in Oregon. After the detention of more than thirty Woodburn residents, I have had to have tough conversations with my three-year-old son on ICE, immigration, and racial profiling. I knew this day would come, but I did not plan on having it at such a young age. He has told me kids at his preschool talk about immigration and have mentioned it in the classroom. This surprised me. One evening at home, we were watching the news about how ICE went into a preschool and forcefully detained a teacher. I tried to shield him from it, but he already saw it. His grandfather, in an effort to ease the mood, told him, "Eso de la migra no es algo que tiene que preocuparte. Tu eres un niño." My son responded, "Pero ellos se están llevando a las personas mexicanas. Nosotros somos mexicanos." I have had to have conversations with him about citizenship, which is something complicated and hard to explain to a toddler. "Mamá, pero si mis abuelos nacieron en México, eso quiere decir que la migra los ve como gente mala?" He has said this to me twice with tears in his eyes as he cries hysterically. Both sets of grandparents are citizens and legal residents here, but that does not save them from racial profiling. Another conversation I have had with my son is the topic of police. He said, "Mamá, si la migra se está llevando a todas las personas mexicanas, ¿por qué la policía no nos ayuda?" What do you expect me to tell my son? What do I tell a three-year-old? I can't tell him, "Let's trust the police," because their actions do not say we should. This brings me to my ask for the day. I come here not only to share my story, but to ask that the city councils, the mayor, and the police department take action and help community. The city of Woodburn published a post on social media saying that police, city officials, and the mayor stand with community. This post was the only one on their page that had the comments off. Although that could have been put in place to stop the hateful racist comments, it left no space for community input. You say you stand with us, but what actions are you taking to prove that? Anyone can make a post and stand in solidarity, but what are city officials and the police department doing to demonstrate it? Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Next, I have Alex. Alex?
Hello, my name is Alex. I'm a local resident of the area, Woodburn and Salem. I serve immigrant communities, immigrant youth, in both areas. I'm here to demand that the city of Woodburn take necessary steps to protect all people who reside in this community, especially the community members who are being terrorized and persecuted by ICE. In just a few weeks, our community has lost over forty-two people in mass raids. One include a raid of thirty-five workers, and this is unacceptable. We must do everything possible to reduce the terror that the federal government is causing in our community. I demand that the city of Woodburn institute a state of emergency. With this, the city must include a local resolution that commits to creating a safe and welcoming city, upholding the sanctuary promise of law of Oregon and creating our own local sanctuary policy. Allocate funds, resources for communities impacted by federal cuts and ICE detentions such as housing, emergency shelter, and living assistance and food assistance. Fund local organizations that provide direct assistance to families. Organizations like Centro de Servicios para Campesinos, the Food Bank, and Mano a Mano could be partners to help our community. I also support the demand for the accountability from our local police. Community members have expressed a lot of concerns with how Woodburn Police works with federal agencies. As such, I demand that there is an independent audit for Woodburn Police that gives us transparency. We need to know how Woodburn Police works with federal agencies, including ICE, including requests by these agencies. We need a written and public commitment from local police departments to refuse to sign onto 287G program regardless of sanctuary status. We need training and written protocols for local law enforcement that require ICE agents to identify themselves to police. The use of surveillance technology such as FLOCK cameras is one of the tools that puts our community at risk. We demand the end of the FLOCK camera programs in the city of Woodburn. We demand the end of use of FLOCK cameras by Woodburn Police Departments. We are in urgent need of ensuring that the city of Woodburn addresses security concerns for the community that is being systematically persecuted. FLOCK cameras put our community in direct risk. FLOCK cameras are being used by Woodburn Police Departments to identify so-called criminal activity and solve criminal cases. However, the risk these tools have in our communities outweigh the benefits. Lately, you hear a lot of supporters right now of my community. We come to places like this, and we try to sell you guys that we contribute so much to the country. We're workers. We do all this, and it falls on deaf ears. I think you guys already know, if you guys are Woodburn, how important immigrant people are. So I don't think I need to do that. Mainly because you've seen the videos, you've seen that the stuff that's going on with immigrant communities is inhumane. And I don't think I need to sell you guys that we deserve to be here because we work hard, which is true. But I think you guys are better than that, hopefully. What's going on is inhumane. If it were anything else, you guys would be standing trying to do above and beyond. We've seen it in elected officials in all places. They seem to be very cold when it comes to people of color, working-class people, immigrant people, Mexican people, people south of the border. We're here today. We're gonna continue to be here.
Thank you for sharing. Next, I have Sydney. Sydney?
I work with youth here locally in Woodburn, and I can tell you that kids are experiencing an unimaginable amount of toxic stress. Deportation is nothing new in our communities. It has been happening for years and years. Since October 1st, there has been over three hundred twenty-nine detentions in Oregon. Over three hundred and twenty-nine families impacted, traumatized, and left without their family members, who are almost always the main providers of the family. These violent kidnappings should have never happened. Elected officials in positions of power, you, need to do more than just check up on our communities. We need basic resources. We need legal support. We need you to push back on what's going on. We are not your photo ops. We are not just your representation on a beautiful mural to make the city look pretty. We are real people with real stories, not just a beautiful culture. We demand you advocate for our needs and speak up. We will be here again and again and again and again at the city council meetings until you stand up in a significant way. No matter how long these meetings turn out to be, and no matter how much our presence might be an inconvenience to you, we will be here because we love our community, and we will do anything for it. Our communities are being terrorized. They're being beaten. People die in ICE detention centers. We are not just numbers. We have stories and names. We need more than just pretty words and a solidarity post on Facebook. We need action. We demand the end of the FLOCK camera program in the city of Woodburn. We demand the end of the use of FLOCK cameras by Woodburn Police. We are in urgent need of ensuring that the city of Woodburn addresses security concerns for the community that is being systematically persecuted. FLOCK cameras put our community in direct risk. FLOCK cameras are being used by Woodburn Police Department to identify criminal activity and solve criminal cases. However, the risk of these tools have on our community outweigh the benefit. We demand an audit of the use of the FLOCK cameras. And then the audit must include the number of requests made by other agencies, FBI, ICE, DEA, and other federal agencies. We demand we demand an audit of the shadiness of the Woodburn Police Department collaborating with ICE. We demand you declare a state of emergency in Woodburn. Pass local sanctuary status resolution that strengthens our Sanctuary Promise Act locally to allocate funds, resources for communities impacted by the federal cuts and ICE detention centers. This includes housing, emergency shelters, and living assistance, food assistance. Fund local organizations that provide direct assistance to families like Centro de Servicios para Campesinos, the Food Banks, Mano a Mano. Cities must create more inclusive ways of community engagement and input, such as public libraries, schools, community organizations. We demand that you act now.
Thank you. Thank you. Valeria Coronado?
Good evening. My name is Valeria Coronado, and I'm actually from Arizona, and I moved here in 2022. And I decided to stay because of Woodburn. I fell in love with Woodburn and the community here. And I also-
Closer to the mic?
Yeah, sorry. But I decided to stay because I love Woodburn and the community that I found here. And I am also a case manager for migrant workers in Oregon that have been exploited by the ag industry in some form or another. And I have heard many stories throughout my time as a case manager. And many of these are full of hope, dreams, and love for their families and the communities that they live in, as well as the country that they have come to. And so I ask you to listen to their stories that you've heard today and acknowledge the hopes and dreams and the love that you hear in these stories and protect the people that are here in the room with me today and the ones that are not here today. And I also ask that you remove the Flock system because it's bringing terror into our families. And I also ask that you protect them, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing. That was the last card that I had. Have I missed anybody that wanted to speak and didn't? I didn't get the card? No, then I will close this section of the meeting and not allow anymore. Sure, come on up. Please, give me your name and-
How can I move this? Si, bueno. Mi nombre es Javier Seja. Soy de México, del estado de Michoacán. Y este, pues miren, yo llegué aquí en el ochenta y cinco. Tengo cuarenta años yo aquí en este pueblo. Venimos diez trabajadores del campo de California, porque en esos años en California la migran daba, pero se llegando a los files y arrastrando con toda la gente. Una cosa que yo les quiero pedir, no sé qué vayan a hacer ustedes con estos testimonios, pero lo que yo veo es que según sé estos señores están llevando a mucha gente que también tiene el modo de vivir aquí legalmente. Entonces los llevan a Tacoma, y allá luego los sueltan ahí nomás para afuera. Yo creo que deberían de pagarles el pasaje de allá aquí, e incluso una comida, porque bien canasta la tienen. Y no quiero hablar del tiempo que pierden y de demandas y eso que serían justo también para esa gente. Yo se los dejo así nada más como una propuesta que no sé si la puedan poder echar a andar, pero para esto que está pasando creo que debería haber también una respuesta, pues. Es todo, gracias.
Gracias. Again, thank you for sharing. Is there anyone else that I missed? Then with that, I will close this section of the meeting and not take any more testimony from the public. And we always have one more. Come on up.
Hola, buenas noches. Pues yo no estaba en la lista, pero ya estoy aquí, y también voy a dar mi testimonio. Mi nombre es Griselda Scott. Yo también soy de Morelia, Michoacán. Tengo veintidós años, que me vine para este hermoso estado de Oregon. Este, desde que llegué, se abrieron las puertas para mí y para mi familia, porque afortunadamente, pues aquí encontramos el sueño americano que tanto anhelábamos, ¿verdad? Yo tengo un negocio aquí en el centro de Woodburn. Es Costa Azul Travel, es una agencia de viajes. Y como dijo la señora Carmen, estos días o estos meses han sido extremadamente difíciles para nosotros. No hay ventas, no hay gente, no hay nadie que se quiera parar en el centro de Woodburn, pues por todo esto que estamos viviendo, ¿verdad? Ya todo mundo lo dijo. Entonces, lo que quiero yo pedir personalmente es que nos ayuden ustedes como autoridades para para ver si nos pueden ayudar un poco a nosotros los negociantes y a toda la gente, a toda la comunidad, porque toda la comunidad tiene miedo, los niños tienen miedo, los jóvenes tienen miedo. Nosotros tenemos miedo. Entonces, ¿qué va a pasar si todo el mundo tiene miedo? Nadie quiere salir a trabajar, nadie quiere salir a comprar, nadie quiere salir a nada. Entonces, una comunidad también se mueve por la economía. Si no hay economía, no hay nada tampoco. Entonces, hay que hacer algo. Es todo, gracias.
Gracias. Thank you for sharing. So with that, I will close public comment and will not open it up again for any input from the public on this. I will let counsel speak if they do after. I want to say a few things. I am very glad and fortunate you all came tonight. Glad that we were able to offer a platform that you can share your thoughts, your concerns, your worries. There's nothing new to us. We have the same fear and concerns in our community. We have vested interest in our community too, and we see the horrific actions that have taken place by ICE agents. Our job is to provide a safe community. And it is very hard right now, knowing that we have to follow laws and regulations of the federal government that are different than state laws. We have taken actions where we can. I know that our city administrator, straighter Scott, myself independently, have talked to our school superintendent. We're aware what's going on at the schools and are very worried about that, knowing that there's a fear in the community, knowing that kids are scared to go to school, not knowing what's going to happen. They get there, if they get home, that is not a way to live. On top of that, we've had many meetings. We have a very good city attorney. Our police chief meets with her regularly to determine if there's anything that has changed. She will keep us informed on state law. Our police have never worked with ICE agents. They will not work with any ICE agents. That is not city law. They will always respond to any 911 call every time. Please do not hesitate. If there is an issue, call 911, and our city police will get out there. They are here to protect our citizens the best way they can. Counselor Bravo and myself and our city administrator met a few weeks ago with our Mexican consulate out of Portland, came down to see if there was anything that he could do that we could do additionally. Even that proved to be very limited. He did state that he was willing to see what he could do with some limited financial assistance and with immigration paperwork. But again, very limited on what we were able to do. We've talked with, I've talked with Congresswoman Salinas's office to see if there's anything that, everything we're dealing with is a federal issue, to see if there's potentially some help at that level. And it's very difficult at that level right now because of the current administration that is enforcing these ICE and immigration work. Knowing that, we have reached out to Attorney General Rayfield. We're looking to get a town hall here in Woodburn. They are, his staff is aware of what's going on in Woodburn and is very concerned. And like somebody said, yes, he wants to be very helpful, and I think he's a good man. He sent out some forms that I will share with the council. They will be on our webpage, that incident reports that they can respond to unfortunately after the fact. But we are reaching out to, like I say, everybody we possibly can, trying to change what's going on. It's not going to happen overnight. It's not going to happen next week. I'm worried this is the beginning of a lot of things that are going to roll on. We have to be very careful. We have to try and not break any laws to draw attention to us. And I don't want Woodburn to be a hub of the more that we reach out and cry foul, the more they'll come down here. That's not good. So again, we are worried. We know the economic impact it's having in our downtown business. We've been here for many years. I see the lack of people coming downtown. It is hurting almost every part of our economy here in Woodburn. It's not good. And again, I'm worried this is the beginning. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to say?
Yo voy a hablar en español, y lo puedo decir después en inglés. Gracias a todos, a toda la comunidad que está aquí presente. Gracias por su valentía, gracias por su testimonio. Los escuchamos, y tienen mi apoyo, la comunidad. Estoy muy orgulloso de Woodburn, y este, de nuevo reitero que es una comunidad inigualable. Muchas gracias por su valentía, por su testimonio. De verdad, muchas gracias. I just wanted to say thank you to the community for their bravery, for being out here and speaking their truths, their stories. Woodburn's community is unlike any other, and I am proud to be part of Woodburn. I hear you, and you have my support. Thank you.
Very emotional. Late. I have family. I know you're anxious, heartbroken. And if I had a magic tool that would come fix it, I'd be up there counting on whoever does or whatever I could do. I feel absolutely strangled in the fact that I can't do anything because the federal government seems to have this agenda that's hurting my community, your community. But like I say, I don't have the tools. But I just want you to know, as a city council, as a president of your city council, I care and I feel your pain. And thank you for coming in and sharing. I'll listen to anybody anytime.
I think we all will. Thank you. Well said, counselor.
I would just like to thank each and every one of you and those that didn't come for this fight. It is a fight. It's going to be a long fight. There's no quick fix. There's no easy answer. We're facing fascism head-on. And I share your pain and I share your outrage. And what we can or cannot do at this point remains to be seen. And we're working behind the scenes on ways in which we can better protect all of the members of our community, and in particular, our targeted brown-skinned members that make up the majority of our community, because this is a racist assault against our community. And we are equally outraged, because you are.
Thank you, counselor.
I just want to add too, I don't want to cry. I'm heartbroken for what is happening. And we hear you, we're listening, and I do hope that we can form workshops and town halls, and I will show up. I'm on your guys' side, and I'm disgusted with what's happening. So anytime I am here in Woodburn, I will show up and I will be there, and I support each and every one of you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Corwin, ladies?
Thank you for coming. I work at the schools, so some of you know me, and I see students every day. And I just wonder, they question, I want to know where I stand on things, and I assure them that I'm there with them. And I appreciate everything that's being set up here, but for me, I'm angry. I'm angry like all you are, because this is my home. I've lived here for over sixty years, third generation, and this is not my American dream. This is not what I ever dreamed Woodburn or my country to become. And I'm devastated. I don't want to say I'm heartbroken because I haven't given up hope. I believe that we will come around. There is hope for all of us. And every day I just wait, is it today? Is it going to happen today? This is a fight between, as you said, good and evil. There's things going on that we can't see, we can't imagine, but we all have to believe that the good will come out in the end. And as far as you getting support of police officers, we would be there. I would be there with you if I knew when these people were showing up to harm our folks here. We don't know when they're coming. We don't know anything. It's always after the fact. And so as Frank said, call 911. So we as a community can come together and perhaps be there and stand up to the folks that are coming and harming our people here. But just keep up the fight, keep up the good fight, be brave. That's all I can say. Just like me, I'm trying to be brave through this too.
Thank you, counselor. Anything else from the city that we didn't cover?
Yeah, I appreciate hearing the stories. We hear a lot of stories. And it's outrageous to think that people are being targeted for skin color and for language and for location, and that the values that we have strived to achieve as an organization over the years were not that. And to see that happen in our community, and we've worked so hard to try to build up Woodburn's, communicate what our values are about a community that is a community of color, and to try to build cohesiveness and togetherness and to promote what is best about all of our cultures here in Woodburn is very heartbreaking and it's very frustrating. I can tell you that, I can tell you the police department is not happy. The police department, you know, doesn't like to see these activities occurring in their community, not being included. They can't be included, and they're not included. But to see people treated the way that, are we training our police officers not to behave that way? To de-escalate, to treat people with dignity and respect, to respect constitutional rights? And it appears that that doesn't always happen with federal agents, and that is very concerning. You know, it's just disheartening. I've seen all the videos too, and it's very, I don't understand it.
None of us do.
Mr. Mayor, I do think though that there's power in telling stories though, and highlighting the immorality of behavior and how the reality falls short of the expectation and what, and the way things are supposed to be, I think is powerful. So the more, the more we can hold the mirror up, I think, to what's happening, and the more that you can tell your stories and show the injustice of what is transpiring, the more I'd like to believe that good people will be motivated to do something and to facilitate change. So I just encourage you.
Okay, again, thank you all for coming. We're going to move on with the rest of our meeting. Believe me, this is not over. I wish it was, but this is just probably the beginning. I invite you all to come back to any meeting, so. Thank you. With that, I'm going to move on to presentations and up with Republic Services.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for sharing.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just pay a big shout out to our translators. That was, that was an incredible skill that they have. I'm so impressed. I know I said it before, but wow.
If anyone has a radio, please leave it at the desk or the table. Yours didn't work. We're going to take a five-minute break here and then get going.